So we all know Bemo Patel. You've been in this community a long time, serving in the hospitality industry. And I have served with you on the Visit Cincy Board and really have relied on your expertise. And you just have a very good sense of where things should go in this community by way of the hotel motel industry. And it's an invaluable presence that you have, I think, on these local boards because you lend so much insight, because you have a very vast history in the business. And it's really an asset that we can rely on you. And so I'm really honored that you're here. I'm thrilled to celebrate you. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Reese for a couple of comments, and then we're going to turn it to you.
Yeah, I just want to congratulate you and thank you for your work. And as someone myself in this industry of tourism, certainly understanding that you have always said tourism is economic development. And so, very happy, and I have had some people in here who have brought me
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. We're going to move into our presentations again. Thank you all for your patience. Apologize for the delay. So it is Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Month. And so we are celebrating this month by recognizing some individuals in this community that are here with us today. But before we do that, we're going to read through the proclamation about the broad declaration of the month and then recognize the individuals as we go. So Commissioner Reese, you have this in front of you.
Yes.
So this is a proclamation, again, recognizing Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Month, whereas this month was first celebrated beginning in 1978 and became a month-long celebration in 1992.
Whereas Hamilton County Commissioners recognize May as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Month, also known as A A N H P I Heritage Month, to better understand and honor the contributions made by Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders to Hamilton County and the United States of America.
And whereas Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders make our community more vibrant through diversity of cultures, languages, and religions, there is no single story of the A A N H P I experience, but rather a diversity of contributions that enrich America's culture and society.
Whereas Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders make up a community of culturally and linguistically diverse individuals representing populations from many countries and islands.
And whereas each year, the Federal Asian Pacific American Council develops a theme for A A N H P I Heritage Month, with this year's being "A Legacy of Leadership and Resilience," to honor the hard work of A A N H P I leaders who established a foundation for future generations to thrive and adapt to change and adversity.
Whereas Hamilton County celebrates and honors the invaluable contributions that the A A N H P I communities have made to our nation's culture and arts, law, science, and technology, sports, public service, and more.
Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County does hereby celebrate the exemplary contributions of A A N H P I residents and does hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Month in all of Hamilton County. All right. Thank you. And now we are going to recognize, as we said, some individuals in Hamilton County from our community. I am going to start with Bemo Patel. So I'm going to read this first, Bemo, and then if you would come forward, we're going to have you receive it. But let me read through it first, and then we'll say a few comments. Recognizing Bemo Patel. Whereas the Hamilton County Commissioners recognize A A N H P I Heritage Month, and whereas Bemo Patel grew up working at his family's motels in eastern Kentucky and Williamstown, Kentucky, learning the hospitality business from a very young age, and whereas Bemo graduated from Transit University, I didn't know that, in 2002 with a double major in economics and business administration with a concentration in hospitality, restaurants, and tourism, and whereas Bemo began his career working in restaurants and then began running seven hotels for an independent hotel company in Lexington, Kentucky, where he learned the foundational skills required to run a multi-facility business and manage employees at different levels. And whereas Bemo's experience with the independent hotel company inspired him to start his own business, leading him to opening Rolling Hills Hospitality in 2005. And whereas Rolling Hills Hospitality started with a contract to manage a single hotel and has grown 20 years later to control 15 hotels, with several more in the pipeline in the southwest Ohio and northern Kentucky region. And whereas, under Bemo's leadership, Rolling Hills Hospitality has developed a wealth of experience in construction, renovations, food and beverage operations, and extended stay models in order to create hotels that cater to both transient and long-term residents. And whereas Bemo additionally serves on the Federal Reserve Bank of Cleveland Board of Directors, joining the Cincinnati Branch Board of the Bank in early 2024, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of Hamilton County does celebrate Bemo Patel and honor his invaluable contributions to our county and does hereby proclaim May 22nd, 2025, as Bemo Patel Day in all of Hamilton County. And so we all know Bemo Patel. You've been in this community a long time, serving in the hospitality industry. And I have served with you on the Visit Cincy Board and really have relied on your expertise and your, you just have a very good sense of where things should go in this community by way of the hotel motel industry. And it's an invaluable presence that you have, I think, on these local boards because you lend so much insight because you have a vast history in the business. And it's really an asset that we can rely on you. And so I'm really honored that you're here. I'm thrilled to celebrate you. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Reese for a couple of comments, and then we're going to turn it to you.
Yeah, I just want to congratulate you and thank you for your work. And as someone myself in this industry of tourism, certainly understanding that you have always said tourism is economic development. And so very happy, and I have had some people in your, I've brought many people to your properties. And so just thank you so much, and we appreciate your expertise.
Thank you for that biography. It was, it's been a long time, 20 years since I started my company. And, you know, we're in the hospitality and the people business, and we deal with the public every day. We're not perfect. We make mistakes. But I learned a long time ago, it's about how you recover and continue to strive to be better. And so it's been a privilege to be here in Cincinnati, Hamilton County. Our company is based here in downtown, over 600 employees, and continuing with growth. And we just opened a really cool hotel in downtown, The Moxie by Marriott. And just, you know, it's been a pleasure to be a part of the community. And again, I can't be thankful enough for this honor. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Bemo. Yeah, we're going to come down and take a photo. Okay, ready? Thank you. All right. Commissioner Reese, I'm going to turn it over to you. I've got one more. Do you have, Kristi? Okay, you go on.
Thank you. The next person that I'm happy to honor is Jay Beatty, if he would come to the podium. And I know the first part of each of our proclamations has the background on the month, but I want to start at this point, whereas, of course, the month of May is recognized nationally as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, at a time to honor the contributions, cultures, and histories of the AAPI individuals who have enriched our nation's progress and promise. Whereas Mr. Jay Beatty, a distinguished entrepreneur and hospitality professional with over 25 years of experience, has made a profound impact on greater Cincinnati's economic vitality and cultural vibrancy through his visionary leadership and deep commitment to excellence. And whereas, as the founder of LDI Hospitality and former CEO of Elements Event Center and Limousine Services, Mr. Beatty has been at the forefront of transforming spaces, building legacies, and creating unforgettable experiences for families, clients, and communities. And whereas his hospitality expertise has touched many facets of the region's development, serving as a business advisor to Elevated Minds Academy, Delta Hotels by Marriott, and LDI Hospitality Management, where his insight and innovation have helped clients achieve growth, quality, and long-term sustainability. Whereas Mr. Beatty's work bridges industries and communities, and his professional excellence is matched only by his generosity and belief in elevating others, mentoring young entrepreneurs, and guiding organizations with integrity, creativity, and strategic vision. Whereas he embodies the spirit of A A P H I Heritage Month through his cultural pride, tireless entrepreneurship, and unwavering pursuit of empowerment, serving as a role model and changemaker in greater Cincinnati and beyond. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby recognize and celebrate Mr. Jay Beatty for his exceptional leadership, community impact, and contributions to the hospitality and business sectors. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners does hereby and declare May 24th, 2025 to be known as Jay Beatty Day in all of Hamilton County. Let me ask President Dreehouse to say a word, but I do want to say something to add to this. Mr. Beatty and his family, at a time when we're, when we look at hotel motel hospitality, we go beyond just downtown Cincinnati. We've got 49 municipalities. And you're out in the northern part of that, across from the Covices Center of Sharonville that we put money in to help expand and keep going, and for you to bring a Marriott property and upgrade that property across the street. It was critical to our expansion of bringing customers there. And so I just want to thank you for that. And there's many groups that have asked to say, how can I stay out in the suburbs? Where should I go? And we've sent groups to your hotel, and they have had nothing but positive experiences. So just wanted to highlight that because I know, as a board, we look at the whole county, and that was an important expansion that we did. And it was very critical to have a host hotel across the street like yours that provided that service. So just wanted to highlight that.
Yeah, just pile on to that, especially because we've got the renovations happening downtown, so it became even more important that the Sharonville site with the hotels associated with it were up, were thriving, were available for individuals that wanted to come to this community and host events, because we couldn't do them downtown. So appreciate the effort and the investment that you've made in the northern communities. It's really important, as Commissioner Reese said, that we think of hospitality and the hotel business not only in the central core, which is critical to the economy of our county, but also that northern region that plays such a big part in this industry. So thank you for what you've done for the community.
Thank you.
Short term, Mr. Beatty.
Thank you. I'm honored and humbled to get this award as Jay Beatty Day, May 24th. Thank you, Commissioners, for recognizing that. I'm going to read, okay? Sorry. Give me one second. I don't have words, so I just put it out. So this, I'm going to need my glasses too, sorry. This recognition means a lot to me. Take it easy. Well to me, as I expect this on behalf of communities, families, and friends who have supported me in this journey. From hospitality to business and community service, everything I have done, it has done, been driven by love for people and desire to make a positive impact in the community. None of this would have been possible without the encouragement of my family, friends, mentors, and community. I proudly serve. This day is not just about me. It's a celebration of us and what we can achieve together when we support one another with heart, hard work, and hope. Thank you, Commissioners, for recognizing this. This means a lot to me. Keep doing what I'm doing. Thank you.
We've got one last proclamation. And I will admit that as we do these proclamations and celebrate really the diverse culture that we have in this community, and it's fun to do because we get to hear about people and meet different people. This one was recommended to me by my Chief of Staff, Kevin Ty, who is a little bit younger and quite a bit cooler than I am. And you'll hear that in the language of this proclamation, because I am not always on the cutting edge, but the next person is always on the cutting edge. And so I am very excited to celebrate Hideki Harada, who is with us. I'm going to read through this. Please come forward. And yeah, it's astounding, all the things that you've done. Because people are going to recognize the names of all the restaurants. So this is a proclamation recognizing Hideki Harada, and it talks about how we're celebrating A A N H P I Heritage Month. Whereas Hideki Harada has been a Cincinnati resident since childhood. His first job at Buffalo Wild Wings sparked his love for being in the kitchen. Whereas Hideki started out as a sushi chef at Embers and Kenwood before moving to Osaka, Japan for four years to attend culinary school. After culinary school, he worked in Amsterdam for eight months at a Michelin hotel, eventually finding his way back to Japan and then back to Cincinnati. Whereas Hideki's first Cincinnati restaurant was Kaze, which he opened in 2012. After that, he opened Kiki in College Hill, serving unique Japanese cuisine dishes such as seafood ramen, house-made kimchi, and chicken karan, also named as fried chicken. Whereas Kiki has, oh, Hideki has, oh, Kiki has received national attention as it was visited by Guy, is it Fieri, for his famous diners, drive-ins, and dives in 2023. Hideki and his wife Yoko also named semifinalists together for the James Beard Foundation Best Chef Award, and Kiki was also named the ninth best restaurant in the city by Cincinnati Magazine. And whereas Hideki also owns Sen by Kiki inside Finley Market, a fish market that mainly sources fresh sushi-grade seafood, but also offers oyster service for those looking to enjoy fast and fresh seafood. And whereas Hideki recently opened Duruma, Duruma, on Court Street, a Japanese convenience store that offers both convenience and quality food items modeled for convenience stores in Japan. And whereas Hideki's most current venture is the reopening of his nationally acclaimed restaurant, Kiki in Clifton, exciting residents in all of Hamilton County and beyond as they look forward to the cozy atmosphere, friendly staff, and menu bursting with delicious dishes. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of Hamilton County does hereby celebrate Hideki Harada and honor his invaluable contributions to our county and does hereby proclaim May 23rd, 2025, is Hideki Harada Day in all of Hamilton County. So as I said, I've been to some of your restaurants, particularly excited about the ones at Finley Market, where we've recently made an investment in Garage. Yeah, right? So thank you for bringing this vibrancy to our community and being willing to invest here. You've had a lot of options, and you've been a lot of places. So thank you for your commitment to the city of Cincinnati and Hamilton County. Commissioner Reese?
Yeah, I'll just add, thank you for your commitment. And I don't know if we should have had this proclamation, because we didn't have any lunch. And I'm thinking like, wow, this is amazing. That's a journey.
That's right.
But yes, thank you. And your story is so amazing, coming from the bottom up, come a long way from Wild Wings to being on national TV. And that also helps us bring people to our county and our region. So thank you for all that you do and excited about your new restaurants and having a chance to try some of those.
Thank you so much. To the Board of Commissioners for electing me as a member of this contribution, and thank you so much for this honor. I got to say, it comes different when I hear it, you know? And time does fly. But yeah, being a Cincinnati resident, I grew up in Sycamore Township, and seeing the growth in Cincinnati and in Hamilton County of like the amount of Asian Americans here now compared to back in '86, '87, I was maybe one of five Asian kids in my school, to seeing such a growth in the Asian community is remarkable. And I just really am thankful to be able to share that with the city and sharing a story as well as an experience and to really just kind of bring something fresh to our beautiful city. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all for being here and thanks for coming in. The next item on the agenda is public comments, and I have two speakers cards here today. I've got Larry Falcon and Marilyn Wall. So Larry, there you are. Please come on up. You've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here today to speak in support of MSD's plan to build an anaerobic digester at the Little Miami wastewater treatment plant and to also offer a caution about that plan. I support the plan because, number one, it gets a lot of raw sewage sludge out of the landfill, which is not the best place for it. It generates renewable energy from this resource that we've been previously throwing away. It reduces the toxicity, and it dramatically reduces greenhouse gas emissions for MSD. So it does a number of good things. The caution that I want to give you relates to the biosolids that result from the process. There is a growing awareness that the biosolids contain high levels of contaminants that are very resistant to most treatment technologies. Forever chemicals, PFOS and related chemicals, are found in sewage sludge in relatively high concentrations. I have not been able to find any data on what the PFOS levels in the sludge from the Little Miami wastewater treatment plant are. And so I would urge you to make sure that appropriate testing and analysis is done so that we know how much contaminants are in this sludge. In many communities, this sludge is placed on farmland, but in many other communities and many countries around the world, it has been banned from placement on farmland because it delivers chemicals into that land that pose hazards. The U.S. EPA just recently put out a preliminary risk assessment that says that those hazards may be at unacceptable levels. We won't know until we see the data on this sludge because it varies from place to place.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Appreciate it. Marilyn? Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to comment today. MSD is proposing to construct an anaerobic digester facility at the Little Miami wastewater treatment plant and anticipates beneficial use of the resulting biosolids. Biosolids derived from sewage sludge have been land or surface applied for beneficial use on crop and rangelands in many U.S. communities. U.S. EPA has acknowledged that biosolids may contain levels of PFAS and PFOS that may exceed EPA's acceptable risk thresholds. Scientific literature also acknowledges that biosolids may contain pharmaceuticals that are not destroyed by anaerobic digesters. Heavy metals from industry, consumer products, and stormwater runoff are all Heavy metals from industry, consumer products, and stormwater runoff are also not destroyed by anaerobic digesters, but post-risk to soil, water, humans, and ecosystems. Toxic waste from industrial discharges may also be present in sewage sludge. The anaerobic digesters remove pathogens from biosolids, which is good. Numerous other toxics in biosolids can be health and human health and ecological threats. Land application of biosolids may become a liability to city and the county. Sierra Club is not opposed to construction of an anaerobic digester at the Little Miami wastewater treatment plant, as it may be the least harmful of available options, but other processes for sewage management include incineration and landfilling. None of these are desirable. We have several recommendations, we're going to run out of time on, but I've given you written copies of our comments for the record, and we would recommend that sludge from the treatment plants be sampled and analyzed for a broad suite of chemicals, pharmaceuticals, and other potential contaminants to fully characterize the potential human hazards associated. Sierra Club also opposes the land application of sewage sludge and biosolids. We recommend that the city and county forego the use of biosolids and instead manage them in a manner that doesn't allow for discharges or harm that can potentially harm human people and waterways and all.
Yeah, thank you. And we've got your written testimony. Thank you, Marilyn, and thank you, Larry, for bringing this to our attention. MSD is sitting right in front of you, so I appreciate you bringing this issue forward. All right. Next, we'll move to Commissioner's comments and motions. Commissioner Reese?
Yes, thank you very much. One item I would like for administration or the environmental folks to give us, the pollen levels have been very, very high. And I mean, I have really bad allergies, but it has gotten to the point where I almost choked to death just walking outside my house right by one tree. And I'm hearing that more and more people are dealing with their astmas and those levels. So I want to know what the levels are, maybe with the Health Commissioner as well, and then if there's some tips that can happen because I've been hearing about some older folks who've had to go to the hospital and those kinds of things. The asthma levels are huge. My grandmother died, ended up having a heart attack after an asthma attack in her sleep. So I really want to know where we are and then what tips are we giving to the public as we're going into this holiday weekend and others, what tips people can do as it relates to this? So I think that's very, very important. In addition to that, the 513 relief bus had a stop at Corinthian Baptist Church for an event that was put together with a group that is part of our group, I guess one of the groups that we funded, dealing with addiction response, the African American Council, I don't know the exact name, but the African American Work Group that's dealing with outreach with addiction. And so they had an event, and our 513 relief bus was a part of it, and I was there on last Friday. And they had a lot of information booths, et cetera, with addiction services, but they also had other jobs of family services, public health was there, developmental disability services were also there. There were a number of people there on sickle cell was there, sickle cell awareness. And so do want to highlight those. Pastor Donald Jones, his daughter, put this together along with others, and I just wanted to highlight the work that the work group is doing for the outreach and breaking down. Number one thing was the stigma, breaking down the stigma. And so I thought that was really good. That was last Friday. Also, we had a press conference for our veterans, our second annual Veterans Appreciation Day, and that is going to take place August 23 from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. And that was a very good press conference. Last year, we hosted it, and I was very proud to recommend that and initiate that and have the support of the board. And we were able to put $200,000 to support our veterans. They had over 3,000 veterans. They helped veterans right on the spot. It was a great American ballpark. This year, we're going to expand. It's going to be at Sawyer Point, and it's a partnership with us and the Veteran Services Mission and everybody that's going to be there. There were a lot of partners that were there talking, U.S. Army, disabled American veterans, Cincinnati VA Medical Center, Cincinnati Parks is partnering with us. But what's going to be, I think, even more unique this year is that they're going to bring these mobile units that can approve on the spot for some that are ready to go the disabled benefits. I think that's going to be incredible. So excited about that, and they're asking people to register. If you register, it's absolutely free, but if you register, you get free parking, you get free food, and so you definitely want to register. I would ask that, for me, it's just easier, people know about it, our portal, 513relief.org is kind of a place that I think we have over 200-plus thousand people who have gone there. And I would just ask that we would put a link on that page, so in case people go to that page, I can, we could just say, go to 513relief.org. They can hit that button and direct them to the right website to register. But they're going to have free services, live music, interactive military displays, and they're going to have a fireworks finale. So this is a celebration of those who are veterans and military service. At the same time, we're providing real services. One of the things I did have, though, Mr. Ludo, I wanted to have our office of small business, or maybe this is something for Mr. Robert Bell under his division, because we do have veteran entrepreneurs, veteran businesses that we do business with, and so we want to have a table there for veteran businesses if it hasn't already been happening. I also had a meeting with Mark Lawson, CEO of Hamilton County Community Action Agency, and a lot of people get confused because Hamilton County's name is on a lot of things. We don't have a branding situation, so everybody thinks if it's got Hamilton County, we're in charge, but we're not. They are independent board. We do work with them. But he met with me and was concerned about some of the, obviously, they're tracking some of the budget cuts and recommended cuts in the federal budget and what it would do to those that are served by the Community Action Agency, which has been a safety net along with JFS. And so one of the things he had mentioned was there may be a recommendation for some reallocation of some dollars that we have put that is not being utilized and reallocating it possibly to the property tax component because, he said, they're just, I mean, the list is so long. And we're trying to stabilize those in Hamilton County who have a house and are trying to hold on to the house they have. So he said that he's going to meet with each of the commissioners and something, we should see something soon, but I wanted to give a heads up on that. I would be supportive of it. The other thing is, there's a gentleman that retired. Wow. The CEO of Metro, Mr. Darryl Haley. And yesterday was his retirement celebration at Union Terminal, and I got a chance to see him earlier that day because we were doing some things over there and by Metro with him. So I just want to say with him, there's a man that started out, it's the Hamilton County story. He went, he lived in Evanston, a modest community, and when he was a young child in school, in public school, he, you know, most of us were just getting on the bus. When I went to school, I'm just getting on the bus, trying to figure out how to get to the next bus, get to school, but I never sat down and said, how is all this transit put together? I never thought in a million years, what's the grid? What's off the grid? How do they, how do they put routes together? But he did. And he came out of Evanston community, he's so proud of that. He went to Withrow High School, which I, you know, of course, think is one of the greatest high schools of all time. So I say that jokingly because I know everyone gets to going on the, we love our high schools. But he come up out of Withrow High School, and then he goes on to University of Cincinnati, and then he goes on and decides, I would love to see how this is all put together. And then he comes back to lead Metro at a very difficult time. Transportation was at a very, people were thinking negatively about public transportation. Commissioner Drehouse and I are at the State House all the time. It was hard all the time to get funding for public transportation. And for him to go on and become the CEO of Metro sorta and turn it around and bring all this innovation and reimagine Metro, I never thought it'd be a day we'd have the smaller van-like services that's pretty much Uber without the Uber prices. I mean, for $2, it could take you to the grocery store, and so now if you live out in Sharonville or Colrain Township, you don't have to go all the way downtown. I remember the days of the paper transfer. You had to keep that little paper, and I remember I lost that little paper, and I had to pay full price to get home. But to go from that to apps, and then with the issue seven, to do what you said you were going to do and have signing days where millions of dollars has gone into roads throughout Hamilton County that would not have happened, and then to actually have an announcement on the Viaduct. President Drehouse and myself, we both grew up on the West Side, and everybody talked about the Viaduct, you know? And here we are standing there where we could get this thing finally fixed and moving. So I just wanted to say that it is a, I know that Metro is going to be moving forward, but I don't want to discount. A lot of times, people do the work, and then they get discounted, you forget about them afterwards. He came at a critical time. He got us on the right track. He made a difference. And jokingly yesterday, but seriously speaking yesterday, I said, you know, in the words of the greatest of all time, Muhammad Ali, Darryl Haley, you shocked the world. You shocked the world. And so I just want to thank him and President Drehouse. I teased them, but I was serious. I said, man, if I had an executive order, like they writing up in Washington every other day, I would have an executive order that he cannot retire. I said, now, it might only last 30 days, like the rest of these executive orders, once you go to court, but at least we'll get 30 more days. But no, I wish him the best. I got to meet his mother, saw his children, of course, and his wife, and I told him, don't post too many pictures of him on the beach, having a good time while we're in session. No posting during Tuesdays and Thursdays. But no, I just want to thank, thank him and congratulate him again. The other thing I wanted to hit on, both of us, I'm sure you'll talk about it more, the YWCA shelter, that's why we were running late today. The YWCA shelter ribbon cutting was today, and I want to give a big shout out to the CEO, Raquel Howard Smith, and her entire team, and all of the funders to make this a reality. Now, this is not just any shelter. I remember going to the, she showed me her concept, and I said, man, we got to be a part of this because when someone leaves domestic violence and they need somewhere to go, then you go into a communal type of place, and that's just not, you're used to having your own house or your own apartment, and so sometimes people say, I can't stay, I gotta go back. I don't want everyone in my business. And so they had a concept of having apartment styles where you have, you go in here, you're safe, they bring the wraparound services, but you have privacy through these apartments. And I remember bringing this back, and I know Commissioner President Drehouse will talk about her experience, bringing this back to Jeff and saying, hey, because I think it's the only one maybe in the state that's like this. And I said, man, this is something definitely we need to be trying to do. And I do want to thank Jeff and the administrative team because we, he said, well, you know, we normally haven't done capital projects. I said, well, just because we haven't done it before, it doesn't mean we don't, we need to do something different. And I want to thank you getting with the team to work out all the paperwork, and I think we put in about $400,000 if I'm not mistaken, but today it opened and the vision came to reality, and I, I just think it's a great thing for us to have in our county and in our region. I know we've got something on the calendar today to deal with some other partnerships with the YWCA, but today we also had the ribbon cutting of the infrastructure. So those were the things that I had, I would like for, at some point, we got JFS and the administrators here, about youth employment and understanding what it is we're doing, and then also explaining that are we, I don't think we the only ones that do youth employment. I think the city also does youth employment, and maybe Mr. Ludo can speak to that. There were some questions about it, and I just wanted to make sure that you guys have a chance to clear it up as it relates to youth employment because, you know, we passed the funding, but I don't know all the particulars. But I do want to say that a lot of times, people come at the county, the city also does, because I, the city was doing at one time more than we were doing because I used to go to all their youth employment days. So I would like to get some clarification on that. And that's all I have. Commissioner President?
Thank you. I have a couple of things represented the board at a couple of ribbon cuttings. It's really been an active time, actually. Two of them were, it's for Crossroads. There are more than one organization called Crossroads in our community. So the first one I did and provided a proclamation from the board was the opening of the pharmacy down on Liberty for Crossroads. They serve many, many people in this community, particularly in the over-the-rhin area, so I was happy to represent and celebrate that. And then the second one was across the Crossroads Center. It's up in Walnut Hills. They've got, had a groundbreaking because they are going to providing inpatient and outpatient treatment for people that suffer from addiction and mental health issues. And so I was happy to represent the commission at that event as well, and they were grateful for the proclamation. Also attended the veterans event is Commissioner Reese said, August 23, 2:00 to 10:00, so that'll be a fun and exciting event on Sawyer Point. I also went to the White House this week. That's why I missed the meeting on Tuesday. We were invited to go with many, many other county commissioners and electeds in the state of Ohio to hear their plans for Ohio, and so we heard from the Department of Transportation and Ag and Development and other folks. And then I also was able to run over to Capitol Hill and lobby for some of the things that are important to the county commissioners, to our senators, Senator Husted's office in particular, to make sure that they're aware of all the federal dollars that interface with the county budget, particularly CDBG dollars and home dollars, and just making sure that's still on the radar and that if, you know, they're, they are set to be cut under the president's budget, and so we need to start to ring the alarm bells with our representatives in DC to make sure how alarming those cuts would be to us locally and how important they are to the work that we do in partnership with nonprofits and other advocates in this community. So I was glad to have the opportunity to head over and do that and made sure that they had that ants in the graph that you had provided to all of us, once again, provided that to Senator Hused's office and Senator Moreno's office. Also, went to Darryl Haley's retirement party. It was, it was packed, a tribute to him with so many people that have served on his boards or just, and there was a video collage, and almost everybody called Darryl friend. And it is true that Darryl was an outstanding leader and a real visionary for sorta and has taken us by way of transportation leaps and bounds in this community. He was also a friend to all of us and so welcoming and such a warm person that he will be sorely missed, not only for his capacity to get things done, but also for his warmth and kindness. So was happy to represent the commission at that as well. And then the ribbon cutting at the YW this morning, it was a kind of a poignant moment. They're naming the facility for Francie Pepper, who recently passed away, and she dedicated her life to helping people that suffer in the context of domestic violence. And so John was there, her son David was there, and it was really a touching moment to have that facility named for her. And congratulations to Raquel Howard Smith for making that happen, as you say, Commissioner As you say, Commissioner Reese, we were part of that, both on the Capitol side and on the operating side. We did some operating dollars as well and have an ongoing partnership with the YW and their good work. So was really excited to participate in that. And the difference between this facility and their old facility is that it's very forward-facing and it's part of the community. And so the community is welcome to participate and get to know the women that are in the care of the YW at that facility. And it's just a different look. It's a different trend for how we deal with folks that are in the throes of domestic violence. So I was really excited to be there along with yourself and many others celebrating that event. That's all I have. Administrator Aludo, I know you've got some by leaves. I don't know if you have comments as well.
Yeah, Commissioners, just a couple of quick comments. There were some questions. Commissioner Reese, we'll get back to you on the, I think the administration was working with CAA on the moving of some funding from emergency housing into the mortgage program to allow for the assistance with property taxes, that type of thing. So we'll follow up on that, see where that is in the process. And also, also on the youth employment program. And there's been some specific questions about there as to how funding was allocated this time. So we'll get the board some responses on those as well. Just, oh, and we do continue to do pollen mold counts. So we'll get some information on that to the board. I think we partner with an app now that people can download so they can quickly get pollen mold counts on, on their phone. But we can work with the Health Department as well to get some tips and things like that for, for folks, especially as we go into a busy holiday weekend. As I do have a couple of by leaves, but before I go into that, just another quick note as the board celebrates Asian American Pacific Islander Month this month. And as the county does that, I just also want to thank all the folks in departments across the county and HR who have celebrated that recognition here internally to the county. We had a kind of an immersion event, I think it was last week or the week before over Job and Family Services. There's a panel discussion, I think, getting ready to start up on the eighth floor this week. So I want to thank everyone, or today, want to thank everyone who's involved with that. I know John Nelson's here and he's been involved with, with those events as, as well. So just want to thank everyone who has helped put those together for the county. We do have two by leaves on your agenda, Commissioners. These relate to, these are by leaves one and two in your packet. These relate to a, a tax exempt financing as well as an, an extension of our animal services contract with Cincinnati Animal Care. John Bergen is overseeing both of those items and is here to walk you through both of them.
I have very little more to say than what Jeff did, just did. Resolution number seven, by leave one is, is a, elected official approval of, of a debt issuance that's being done by the Port Authority, a conduit issue that they're doing for some housing in Colrain Township. It's 118 units of affordable senior housing in Colrain Township. And they just need the approval of the highest level elected office in the county. And then the second one, by leave two, resolution number nine, is our contract with, for animal services with Cincinnati Animal Care. So happy to bring that forward today.
Thank you. So item number one or by leave number one, is there any cost to the county?
No, this is not our debt. This is debt of the Port Authority and it's a conduit issue there. So they're actually issuing it via, for the developer.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And then on by leave two, is, how long is the term for this contract?
The, the con, the, the award is, is a 10-year contract with, with five two-year terms. So this is actually awarding the amounts for both '25 and '26.
Okay, so two years.
Two years.
With options. Okay, all right, very good. Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Yes, thank you. Just had a question about the animal care component. We had an issue earlier this year that happened twice in Colrain Township. And I, I don't know if that was more the dog warden not at the time wanting to take the dog to animal care, or was it animal care not wanting to accept the dog? I just want to make sure they had, you know, the citizens, a vicious dog had attacked citizen and they had to go to the hospital. And then I think a week later, another one viciously attacked. So I just wanted to make sure with our contract with animal care, do they accept if the dog warden brings the dog and say they gotta get out of that neighborhood and put them somewhere?
Yeah, we clarified policy and everybody was sort of in agreement in the wake of those situations that, you know, when we are looking at a situation of a vicious dog attack, our policy is that those dogs will be quarantined at the animal shelter.
Gotcha, okay.
So there are instances where Ohio law seems to offer a lot of flexibility about where that quarantine can happen, but we're taking a stronger position that it will happen at the shelter.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I'm going to make a motion that we approve of by leaves one and two.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, John. All right.
Commissioner President, before we leave on, I had one, I forgot one more thing for, for Jeff to look into. When you were out in Washington, they had a presentation on here, you had heard the original presentation, but I think it was a follow-up with 3CDC on 513 generosity. And in that presentation, they even talk about expanding out into the county. And there were two things and to me, my observation, when you start saying expanding out, that means more money. But also, how could we expand out and we can't handle what we have? We can't handle the courthouse to Kroger's. Now, I had brought it up and everybody said, oh, you don't, it's okay. Today, I just pulled in again. And when I pulled in again, they done set up shop, standing on the, right in front of our building. And they done brought more people who said, can you help me? And that's what I'm talking about. And I asked the sheriffs, have you seen 513 generosity? They said, no, we ain't seen them today. And they might still be downstairs. But when I got out, they wanted me to give them something and they brought two or three more friends. So that's the kind of stuff, I don't see any sponsor that would sponsor anything. And they say I'm sponsoring something and they come right outside of their building and what they were sponsoring didn't even happen in front of the building. I don't know if you could do anything. They said they go from the river all the way over. Then I was down by the river yesterday and there was a lady that almost came and attacked one of the people that we were with. So if you at the river, I didn't see you and I don't see you outside of this building. And now they're bringing more and more people. So I want to put on there again, you can look at the video, we got video, where is 513 generosity? We don't need you out in these other municipalities because you can't handle already from the courthouse to, I would like to have a pilot program from the courthouse to Kroger's and see how many people can be helped. And I don't know if it, it don't have to be them. I said, I wanted to see some people out here. Don't have to be the 513 generosity. I don't care who it is. But it's just, it's getting worse. And, you know, we can't be talking about we gonna expand to these other municipalities. You can barely handle from the courthouse to Kroger's. So I want to put that on there, even though you say, oh, I seen them help one person, two. These people are down here and they bringing more people. And homeless say he don't do it. Generosity say they don't do it. 3CDC say they don't do it. Who's doing it? Somebody's got to do something. If you can't show that the headquarters has any, a, a good pilot program, then you can't, how can you help outside the headquarters? So that's what I want to put on the table for you to look into and get back with us.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioners. I'm happy to look into it. And as you indicated, the, the, the team that is in place through the generosity, it's actually in partnership with Greater Cincinnati Behavioral Health Services, Mental Health, Mental Health Recovery Services Board. And they do fund, through all of them, a, a group of individuals that, that works the downtown area, including, including Court Street. And their, their goal is to connect those folks with all sorts.
I know the goal, I'm just saying, you, I know all the talking points. I'm not saying it's got to be generosity, behavioral, whoever. I've been saying for five years, I need a pilot between the courthouse and Kroger's. And if you show you can do good there, then we want to expand it. I do see the ambassadors that sweep and everything. That's fine, we got that. But this other part, where they claim they doing all this stuff, I just came up here today. We can, we can adjourn and go downstairs and the, and the people will be right there. And if I'm seeing it all the time, I'm just saying, it's, it's, I, I can't see any, if we were in the private sector, I can't see the private sector funding something and have to ask five times. And right in front of their headquarters is the problem that they claim they supposed to be solving. So I just want to put that on your plate and maybe get something later.
It, it is, it is on our plate. I would just say a couple of things. Number one, it is, there is a, as I think you indicated, there is a difference between the ambassador program and, and this program. But there's also a difference between the services that these individuals are providing and moving people out of the area. So they, they can touch base with someone, try to offer wraparound services, try to offer them connections to housing. It doesn't necessarily mean someone is going to leave.
But what I'm saying is, it's just like with crime. You saying that you can't do nothing. If they keep on, they gonna keep on, it's gonna get worse, it's gonna become a problem. Do not come in here then and tell me you doing anything. That's all I'm saying. And, and I'll be honest with you, I've never seen it. You go to the private sector. If Proctor and Gamble, CEO, Chairman of the Board, they announce they doing something, he's not gonna go or she's not gonna go downstairs and the thing they said they solving is right still there and the people keep making excuses. Maybe it's not this group, maybe it's not that group. I ain't ask you what group. I told you to get something done there. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. Maybe it ain't this, maybe it ain't that, but something's got to get done.
Well, again, again, I just, in terms of policy clarity, there, there is a substantive difference between connecting people to wraparound services and moving the problem to a different location.
No, I didn't say move it to a, Mr. Ludo, one of your employees that got hit over the head. I mean, come on now. I don't want to keep going back and forth over this with excuses. It's a lot of money when you giving people with excuses. I know a whole lot of people would love to get $125,000. I know a whole lot of people like to get a million dollars. I know a whole lot of people like to get $20 million. So this is not like, you know, it's not an excuse and I take this offense that it's too busy arguing me down and I got 218,000 votes. And the people that come in here that is getting all the money, there's no accountability there. And so all I'm saying is, you want to come at me, but you ain't coming at the people we paying. And, and I think that's the, we got to get ourselves together up in here. I mean, I'm, nobody, you didn't hire me, you didn't, I didn't come in and get an interview from you. I'm not your employee. I'm on the board. And I'm just saying, I voted for some stuff and I don't see the results. And, and I'm down here looking at the results. Every, it keeps happening. So that's all I'm saying is, maybe what we got ain't working. Maybe we need to try something else. Maybe we can improve, maybe we can tweak. I'm not saying move the problem. But if you saying you solving something, I need to, you know, you say your strategies they end it and it doesn't seem to keep be ending. So that's why I'm saying, every time I bring up something, it's always, you want to battle me, the person that's been elected. That's a, that, we, we got, we got something not right.
Commissioner, I'm not trying to battle you on it.
I wanted to go into the budget because I thought that's what I was voting for. And I feel like I received false advertising. So that's my point. I'm sticking with it. And it ain't just me. I got some people call me, say, finally, I live downtown and finally, you standing up and saying something. It ain't, when I bring something, it ain't just me because I don't live in this building. I'm bringing you what the people are saying. And if you getting 125,000, you getting 20 million, you get a million dollars, I don't care what you getting the taxpayers' dollars. We got to have some accountability. And if it ain't working, let's try something else. That's all I'm asking. You say, hey, well, maybe that didn't work, but we trying this. But, you know, we just can't, I just can't in good conscience vote on some money and then go downstairs and the lady asking me for some money. I just voted to help you. Said she needed some help. So that's what I wanted to bring up. And it might not be generosity, might be somebody else got to come with something else. Behavioral health, we spent more money, people's taxes went up for mental health. They went to the ballot and said we will pay more for more help. And some of them can't hold on to their own house. So we want to see more because we paying more. And I don't know where it's coming from, but I'd like to, I'd be willing to sit down and try to figure something out. That's all I'm saying.
So because this has been raised a, a number of times and Commissioner Reese, I know you're not asking for this, but I'm going to ask for it. So I, I think it would be helpful for me because we do have these programs to try to assist people. And there are limitations to what can be done, to your point. And so I think it might be helpful, from my knowledge base, to, to understand better what can be done and what cannot be done. Because some, some of this, we don't have the ability to move people just because they're standing on the sidewalk. And so I, I would think it might be helpful for me at least to get a better idea probably from the prosecutor's office, maybe at a future meeting or, you know, on one-on-ones, doesn't matter, to get a better understanding of that. Like what, what are people's rights out on the sidewalks? What are we capable of doing? What do these different organizations do trying to facilitate somebody getting the help that we think they need? And what are their rights by way of refusing that help and continuing to stand on the sidewalk? So I, I don't have a good sense of that, but I know there are, and I, because I-
I don't know if they refusing the help. I mean, everybody's coming back trying to say, you know, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't want you to say I'm hurting people. I mean, that's a big accusation.
No, 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 I've talked to the people at Greater Cincinnati Behavioral and I've talked to people at 3CDC. And they have approached people and some people do not want the help that's being offered. They, and, and some of them, for strategies, they're not homeless and so that's not a good fit. So others are saying, well, let's try to provide some wraparound services. Some of the people out there simply do not want to engage. They, they, they're contented doing what they're doing and then it becomes an issue of what are we capable of doing? And I've heard the, I don't know if it was the sheriff or one of the deputies talk about this too, there's only so much that can be done. So from my information, it'd be helpful to know where those limits are. You know, what, what can be done, what can't be done, what strategies might be most useful? Because we have tried different things, trying to assist these folks to try to get them the help that they need. But if that's not, that's not doing it, then what are our rights and what are, what are their rights, right? If they just, to get a common, kind of a common ground on that.
I'd be happy to work with the administration and, and come up with a response to that.
Or even, even written, maybe Jeff, even in your, in your weekly, you know, report to us, it might be helpful just, and I'm, I'm not asking on behalf of anybody else other than my-
No, 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 I got you.
I think it, I mean, I, I don't know what people's rights are on the sidewalk.
Yeah, no, I think we moving to too many different components. I'm not, if you're, if you can't get the people to help them, then the budget needs to be cut. There's no sense in investing in something that if you can't do nothing-
Well, it's not everything.
And there's no sense of grandma's property taxes doubling.
No, let me just say-
So no, let me finish.
Some people have been helped and some people are not accepting the help.
But my point is, if they can't help anybody, then we need to cut the budget and put our money somewhere else. Or maybe we need to put our money into having someone that is a liaison in this area. So the first thing, I want to say that, if it can't be done and your hands are tied, then we need to go ahead, we didn't need to add nothing to the budget. We could have kept the budget we had, we could have kept the rate we had, and then the taxpayers don't have to pay extra. Some people have been hurt. Somebody got hit over the head. All I'm saying is, let's try something else. Maybe we need to take that money and put towards someone that's in this area. But we can't keep throwing money down a hole and people say they can't do nothing.
Can I just, 3CDC just testified a couple months ago about a woman that I had encountered outside with her stuff all over, one of the parking spots. We've all encountered the same person and they did get her into a nursing home. So sometimes it does work, other times people aren't open to it. So I, I'm just saying, there are different circumstances.
No, I got you. But the person got hit over the head, nothing happened. So I'm just saying, it's more than one thing. My point is, this is a lot of money. And if the process doesn't work, I see the street sweepers, that process is working. But if this process isn't working, then we need to, we can't just keep taking taxpayer money for processes that don't work. Or we need to shift and say, we've got a liaison ourselves that's in this area. The sheriff has done a good job. She put a person on a bicycle and he is in the area and we see him. She made a shift. I actually see them. I see everything except this. And so that's where I'm coming from because we dump, we putting a lot of money on stuff. And they came, you weren't here, but they came and said, now, they didn't solve this problem. You said, well, they can't help everybody. But then they're saying they're meeting out in the county and they want to expand. Who expands when you can't get this right? And that's just real talk. If it was somebody's private money, if it was my personal money, I would say the same thing. If you can't get it done, I got to find somebody who can. So I'm not here talking about moving people off the sidewalks, moving them out the streets So I'm not here talking about moving people off the sidewalks, moving them out the streets and all of that stuff. What I'm saying is, if you're saying that the people don't need the help, you can't help them, then why am I paying for it? The taxpayers, the government. So I think we got a budget question, rather than a legal question, for me, as we go into the next budget, and we got a tight budget. So that's what I want to--
Well, we'll have that conversation during the budget, but I'm still going to ask for the legal review on it from the administration.
Oh, that's fine, and I'm asking for the budget review.
Engineers in the room, let's move to regular item number one. Good morning? Is it still morning? Good afternoon?
Good afternoon. Just one item today. This is a resolution authorizing a consultant agreement for engineering services with AECOM Technical Services. This is for the 2025 underwater bridge inspections. This is something we do biannally for all our bridges that have water standing at the footers and foundations year round. It's part of the federal requirements. So this is, we put hands on, eyes on every part of the bridge. We don't have internally certified divers, so we have to go out to contract for that. This is for six bridges, Old Coal Rain over the Great Miami, Harrison over the Great Miami, Kemper Road over Sharon Woods, Lawrenceburg Road over the Great Miami, Suspension Bridge over the Whitewater, and Newtown Road over Little Miami. The agreement amount is for $59,917, all out of permissive auto.
Thank you. Any questions?
No questions.
All right, I'm going to move that we approve of regular agenda item number one.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, our next items are MSD. I have, that item number two has been polled. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so let's move to items three and four.
Okay. Good afternoon, Lauren DiGrigio, on behalf of MSD, I have Deputy Director Ryan Welsh, as well as Principal Engineer Matt Spederi with me today. Starting with item three, this is legislation to authorize construction of a local sewer assessment project to benefit two single-family properties at 6340 and 6334 Upper Road in Delhi Township to facilitate elimination of the household sewage treatment systems, which are actively creating nuisance conditions per Hamilton County Public Health. This project was petition initiated and initially included five benefited properties. We are recommending at this time to proceed to construct a sewer to serve only two of those properties, due to concerns regarding the topography and potential hillside instability that would come into play if we extend the sewer further to those other three properties. We have notified those owners that would no longer be included. We didn't receive comments or any sort of objections back from them. We also confirmed with Hamilton County Public Health that those three properties' treatment systems are operable, so the project will address the two homes with the failed systems. There is 100% support from the remaining property owners, so no public hearing is required. We are requesting $212,000 for construction, but these funds will be reallocated from the HSTS Elimination Allowance. It was approved with the 2025 CIP, so no additional appropriation is needed today. These are, this is an assessment project, so as always, the owners will be assessed up to $12,000 after construction is complete and have the option to pay through their property taxes over 20 years. Moving on to item four, this is legislation to appropriate additional funds for the construction of MSD's Little Miami Wastewater Treatment Plant Solids Disposal with Odor Control Project. The purpose of this project is to upgrade solids handling at the Little Miami plant, primarily by installing an anaerobic digester, which will transform wastewater solids into biogas and biosolids. The biogas will be reused onsite as a renewable energy source to run certain plant operations. This will reduce reliance on trucking and landfilling solids, as well as on the electric grid, as Sierra Club pointed out in their comments. Upgraded odor control is also an important component of this project. We're requesting appropriation of an additional $167 million, I'm sorry, $67,898,112 at this time. The board has previously authorized and funded three early work packages for this project. This is anticipated to be the final funding request for this project for the main work package. We take any questions at this time.
Thank you. Yeah, you meant, we had this testimony related to this. Can you address some of the concerns that were raised by the folks that provided testimony?
Yes, Ryan Welsh is here and can speak to the biosolids concerns they raised.
Hi Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, we appreciate the support of, of you and the Sierra Club. With regard to the concerns about PFOS forever chemicals, I think we agree with the Sierra Club that it's something we want to keep out of the food chain. The concern was about what we, the eventual, how we dispose of the solids. And I just want to be clear that that decision won't be made for two to three years, and in the meantime, we're going to be monitoring what's coming out of the treatment plant, what's in the, what's coming to the treatment plant, what's in the solids. We don't have any reason to think right now that we are, have an elevated level in the solids. It really depends on what people flush, what people put down their drains, what people wash in their washing machines, and what goes, makes an end of our sewers. And that can change, but we're going to be looking at the regulations to make sure we comply. And overall, this project will reduce our risk, because as the Sierra Club mentioned, there will be a reduction in volume, reduction in pathogens. And side by side, this will be easier, and we'll be able to dispose of it with less risk than what we do today.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks so much for the explanation. All right, any other questions, Commissioner Reese?
No questions.
All right, I'm going to move that we approve of regular agenda items three and four.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you all for being here. Jeff, let's run through the consent agenda.
Thanks Commissioners. Consent agenda, item number five is the auditor's financial transactions for April of '25. Item six is the administration's actions for April of '25. Item seven, we have polled for the time being, this is the beginning of the financial depository designation process. Just want to make sure we get with the board a little bit more before that initial resolution happens, to make sure the board understands the process and where the, the mailing distributions are going to go to, which financial institutions would be receiving those, see if the board has any comments on that. So that's why we're pulling number seven. Item number eight is a budget adjustment for state grants. This is a BioWatch grant and a JAL diversion grant, total of $442,123. Item number nine is a report of bid and award contracts from the purchasing department for April of 2025 at 3.37 million. Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing an amendment with Motorola Solutions. This is for the replacement of the microwave radio network transmitters and receivers on our tower sites at 1.2 million. Item number 11 is authorization of RFP 016 dash, 016 dash 25, and the execution of an agreement with Talbert House for the Community Alternative Sentencing Center at 1.08 million. Item number 12 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Convergent Technologies. This is for the upgrade of the access control system and camera system inside Paycor Stadium at $398,000. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Board of Health of the City of Cincinnati for a food waste reduction project at $15,000 through Environmental Services. Item 14 is also a grant through Environmental Services for a kitchen waste reduction project, Item number 15 is a JFS item. It is an amendment of a, of an agreement between the Commissioners and JFS and Godrell Enterprises, doing business as Assure Counseling and Treatment for Group Home Services, $866,500. Item 16 are planning and development grants that the board was previously briefed on during a staff meeting. Item 16 is the grant with Cincy Smiles for $25,000 for their Victims of Violence Dental Treatment Program. Item 17 is a, an agreement with Found House at $100,000 for emergency shelter and aftercare services. Item 18 is an agreement for $100,000 with the YWCA for domestic violence wraparound services. Item 19 is reporting no objection to five liquor permit applications in the county. And item 20 is requesting the authorization to travel at the county's expense. This is the coroner of two employees to Long Beach, California, and the coroner, two employees to Columbus, Ohio. The administration recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Reese, any questions?
Yes, I do. Item number 12 is 398,000 for some cameras at Paycor Stadium. I'd like to know, we're in a negotiation, and I'd like to know how many more, how many more projects between now and June 30th will be coming before us for improvements there? We seem to not get any real good credit on when we do do these improvements. What are they? How much will they be? So that I have a good handle on what we have been voting on? Because we've been voting and supporting some of these things. I didn't support the, the extra $65 million memo, but I have been voting on these items. So I'd like to know how many more will be coming between now and June 30th? And what would they be for? And what would the amount be? Because there's been some back and forth that we haven't been investing in, et cetera. And I want to have that information, I think will be helpful. And the more information that we have, the better, because there's been indicated that there have been some meetings, and I know there's maybe two meetings that I'm aware of, that I was okay with. But on here, they've got several meetings that happen, and they make, with the Bengals, I was not a part of those meetings, but they've got several dates, June 8th, June 17th, March 10th, April 14th, May 19th. It's a lot of meetings, I don't know what all was said. So I just need to get my arms around everything, in terms of what we're on the hook and going to do between now and June 30th, or whatever comes before us. And I would like to know what's going on in these meetings, so that I'm aware, whether, however each of us decides to go, I need to know what's going on. So, but that would be helpful. Now, these cameras, are they absolutely necessary? It has to do, are the cameras out? Or are these camera, can we keep the cameras we got until we get past June 30th? Or is this something that needs to happen immediately to help get the season going?
Commissioners, this is the upgrade of not just the camera system, but also the access control system at, at the stadium. So this is switching to a new technology on all these, and this actually comes from stadium parking as a result of our annual capital budget. So this is not a, like a new request or a separate request from the team, this is a part of the approved capital budget that the board approved last year. It is, as you said, 398,000 for the control system and for the cameras. But I can certainly get you a list of the capital items that are, that are coming forward to the board for the rest of the year, and we can try to time it out as well in terms of what's coming--
Yeah, I just think from the, by the deadline--
Yeah.
And what things are needed now, and what things can be, you know, because we need to know, we don't need to make all these investments, and we walk away and we don't have nothing going on in the stadium. We need to make sure that those investments are investments that'll be made, you know, with, with a team and their plan. So I just would like to know those. I know we normally do it, but we normally don't have a lease negotiation as ending, or, or that's has to, you know, give us what we're doing.
Yeah, happy to get your report on that.
So for me, it just helps me to understand, because it doesn't seem like we get much credit when we do vote for these things. They say, oh, you're not doing anything there. So that would just help me get a better understanding of the support we have and are giving. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I am going to move to approve of items, items five and six, and then items eight through 20.
Okay.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm also going to make a motion to a move into executive session pursuant to ORC Section 121.22G2 to discuss the sale or acquisition of property.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?